Okay, so it's 6:03 on November the 14th, 2022. I'd like to open the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board. And the first thing I'll do is call for any adjustments that we have to the Select Board agenda.
We have Tim Appleton, who's sent an email to the Select Board. Because it goes through Robin and didn't get to us until today. We still were able to put him on the agenda because the Woodbury voluntary fire department canceled out. So we can hear Tim when we're done with the Treasurers and Clerk's report.
Sounds great. Okay. So we have one adjustment to the agenda, which is to hear from Tim Appleton.
I do have, regarding the property line between the town and the fire department, I do have, I just wanted to ask Diana some questions about it, so it's not really a discussion. I'd like to be able to look at the actual surveys and the old maps or anything you have, because I have a better understanding of the situation.
When they canceled, I did not bring my file, so.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
But we can do that.
But maybe before the next meeting, when we will meet with them. I'd like to have a better sense of what's happening.
Now, Michael.
I don't need to look at it right now, but we're talking about the meeting.
I could not find an email where you made changes to this. So maybe if you remember what they were, you could just write them in there. Or if they were substantial, I can, we can just hold that for another two weeks.
Yeah, I can, when we go to approve the meetings, I can tell you, it was mostly with some facts and statements about the salt highway. I think that's what this, where is that? Room report continued. I don't even see it in here. Oh, yeah, okay. I could make those changes right now and write them in and give it back to you if I like.
Okay, any other adjustments to the published agenda for today's Select Board meeting? Nope. Okay. We are open for public comment. Hearing none. Ms. Turkey, would you please give us the, oops, excuse me.
Right.
I apologize. We have to approve bills and payroll orders. We'll do these immediately after the meeting and submit them to you directly.
Okay.
Okay. And we have to approve the minutes from the October 24th meeting and the November 7th special meeting.
The, if you could take a minute to read these, I just did the special meeting minutes, Michael, today, and I don't, well, okay, I don't know if I. If I sent them to you, you probably didn't get a chance, so if you could look those over.
So for the October 24th meeting, there were some, in the initial town highway report, I did send some corrections to Diana, and I'm trying to, let's see, it was partly, so I'm just going to read through it. So Michael began an update about the road salt purchase challenges for this upcoming year. The town has been buying salt through DuBois Construction in Montclair, but the company was purchased by Barrett Trucking. And it is not clear whether they will be distributing salt this year. So I did cross out that last phrase. It was definitely clear that they will be distributing salt this year.
But it wasn't at the time of the meeting.
No, it was, it was, but we were still trying to find out if we could get a better price somewhere else. So that, that statement is incorrect. And then last year, we, through DuBois and King and American Rock Salt, we paid $71 a ton, not $77. And then the proposed price from Barrett Trucking was $88 a ton. And we had a scheme of perhaps getting, having a contract with American Road Salt. After, I had talked to them and they had a much better price available, but with the demise of DuBois Construction, they have no Vermont connection to distribute the salt. So, but that didn't work out. So that, that was another option that we weren't able to follow. And that's the gist of it. I mean, I did have the changes written out, but I don't know, we could, we could still approve this.
I mean, you don't have to, yeah.
I could, I could redo the changes and send it to you again.
Okay, well, just find your email where you sent it to me before.
All right, I'll send it.
Then we can sign them next week.
We can.
Yeah, it's not a, I mean, it's nothing major. It's just a.
Well, if there are already comments and we do need to make adjustments based on those statements, then let's wait.
Okay, all right.
And, and we will, we will review the October 24th, '22 meeting minutes again at our next meeting and sign them at that time. So we need to look at our November 7th special Select Board meeting, which was in executive session.
I just want you to make sure that the last two paragraphs, it's okay to say those outside of the executive session, because I believe that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, I haven't made any decisions.
Whatever we decided on.
Yeah, this looks good to me. I can't think of anything else.
Nope. So at this point, I'll read them into the record.
Well, you can just sign this.
And we're in agreement. Correct? But it does, it does have to be read into the record, doesn't it?
No.
No?
We don't, you. They will be in the record.
They'll be in the record. Okay.
There's one to sign.
We agree, so it's all signed.
Clean copy.
That's a clean copy.
Also for you two, not for the agenda, but just to look, you want to look over this letter. Michael?
I did read it quickly and.
Did I send you that?
I read it. And I had no, I had no, nothing that I needed to.
You got, I sent it to you already? Okay. Well, then I don't have a clean copy. I just have the draft copy, so I'll bring one next time.
Good. I thought we'll make sure that Tim gets a copy of it.
Right.
Which is actually, once it's, once it's signed in the record, that's the most important part of it.
Right.
Especially, and Alfie should have a copy of it as well.
Here's one for Robin.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so at this point, we are waiting to approve the modified minutes of the October 24th, '22 meeting, pending adjustments. The November 7th special meeting has been submitted to the town clerk. And now it is time for, Ms. Turkey, if you don't mind, the town clerk's report.
Well, the election went very smoothly. Compared to other towns, we, it was a walk in the park.
Just for the record, can you say what the total number was?
The total number of registered voters that Woodbury has on Election Day was 742. And of that, 742, 480 voted. And out of the 480, 291 were absentee ballots.
Ah, wow.
And.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you want to know who got justice at the piece?
Sure, you can take any information you want to give us.
It was Mary Jean Jemmy, Susan Stately, Jane Nolorendo, Monty Shantney, and I probably won't pronounce her name right, Natalia Zong.
Yeah, you pronounced it right.
Oh, yeah. And one other thing I wanted to mention is that on the clerk's email list that's going around was a lot of conversation about the barcodes that were on your ballots and your envelopes. If you happen to notice those when you got your absentee ballots. And what that was, was for the mailing company that they used. So the right ballot got into the right envelope. It didn't have any personal information on it, other than that barcode said it went to Robin.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so there were, so the people who were concerned about the lack of anonymity were.
Yes.
But not, they were satisfied then. That had not, no, it's not your personal barcode.
I never noticed.
Not tattooed on.
And we have started getting requests in for appropriations for the.
County?
Yeah, town meeting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of them so far. And we have one that has to do a petition.
Who's that?
The senior senator.
Really?
Yep.
I want more.
Yep, they're going from $1,000 to $1,500. So I sent them back the information that they needed to do for the petition and all of that. And then the only other thing I have is the list of roads that the mountain tamers want permission to use. And as they stated on their email, it's the same roads that were used last year.
Do you want to just approve that now under the town clerk's report? Or should we take it up as a separate item?
It's been fairly consistent in the past, in terms of their request. We haven't, that I know of, had a lot of complaints about their treatment of the terrain. They seem like a fairly reasonable, reasonable group with a reasonable approach.
Yeah, they are.
Based on, based on previous experience, I have no problem putting it up to a vote immediately.
And the sections of road that they use are basically connecting them from one trail to another.
It's fairly limited in terms of their actual use of the roads.
I'm surprised, though, that they say the following are for trail access only by local residents. How, who's going to know?
Right.
But anyways, that's what they try to do that makes sense.
I just have one question for Chuck about this. I know last year Greg has had an issue with a section of the Cabot Road that they use. And I know you guys met to try to figure that out. And I'm remembering that nothing got figured out, or?
Well, it's, they had some work done, but this year, they're going to change it. For the most part, they're going to go up, but they're still going to come out the same place. But I think they're going to cross on, across the road on the town brus and go up that side.
Okay, yeah.
That's what Danny Halt told me last time I talked to him.
Okay, great. Do you have any reservations about that group using the roads, other than what we've talked about?
Do you have a copy of this, or do you want one?
Yeah, there's none.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we approve this request for plowed highway used by snowmobiles for upcoming winter.
I heard a second from Michael Gray. Yeah. Those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Is it okay just to reply to their emails saying it was approved? Or do you want an actual letter that goes up with the sled boards on?
I think we'd be happy with that. I mean, it will be in the minutes if they need anything more formal.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with you sending a direct response.
Okay.
That was approved by the Select Board. And if they have questions, they come right back to us.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Turkey, anything else for the town clerk's report?
That's what I have.
Okay, terrific. Okay, so Brandy Smith is absent, so we do not have a town treasurer's report, but we do have all of our bills and payroll orders to review, and we can talk about those directly with Brandy Smith if.
But she still wants us to do this tax abatement.
So the statement here is to approve tax abatement for Kyle Neal property under Subchapter 6, Corrections 1, Grand List, after Return 4261, correcting omission from the Grand List. When real or personal estate is admitted from the Grand List by mistake or an obvious error is found, the listers with the approval of the Select Board, end quote, end quote, this will reduce the Grand List by $2,832.62.
Does anybody know how or why this happened? Is it because of the house burning down?
Yeah, that's it. House burned down. They still haven't come back to request an abatement for the second half of last year.
Last year, right.
But this is an abatement that the listers could have noticed. Didn't.
And did not.
Yep. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the tax abatement for Kyle Neal property.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a unanimous vote to do a tax abatement for the Kyle Neal property of $2,832.62. Essentially, there's no longer a functioning structure on the property.
Well, that's not totally true at this point. Sort of half true, half true, maybe.
Yeah, there's a little more to it than this, but.
Yeah.
The structure that was the house has gone. The house is, is now gone. Okay. That, other than bills and payroll, are everything that we need for Ms. Smith. All right. So it is probably a good time for us to invite Tim to bring up his concerns.
Thank you for placing me on the agenda so quickly. I reached out to this report on Friday about the ongoing situation with one of my neighbors on the Angworth Road, which is known as the Tanya Dagel residence. And I was home Friday, getting ready for winter, when I heard a machine down at the house running. And so I went to take a look. I think Michael and Diana are aware of the history of what's occurred here. I'm not sure if Chris is up to snuff.
Reasonably so.
This has been an ongoing situation for almost 10 years now. More than 10 years, but hasn't intensified since the Dagels have bought it. But for me, this has been an ongoing situation since about 2008, 2009. So my shared property line, which was difficult to know exactly where it was, because the line went through an open piece of ground that didn't have any trees. The boundary trees that did lay on the boundary were cut by the previous owner of the house, Nate Fisk. When he subsequently reneged on the mortgage and left, the house was abandoned until Tanya bought it. So I know the board is aware of concerns that Mike McGlynn has brought forth regarding, you know, what's going on around there. You know, my boundary does extend across Route 14 onto Marie Caton's property as well. This has been quite going on for a while. So I paid to have a survey done. And we identified the survey, some way surveyed, and did the work and completed it. We ended up putting some monuments on the corners. There was one existing that they went and put one on Route 14, and then with assistance from the surveyors, I placed cedar posts down the line between the two monuments. Essentially, survey pins.
How often, how often were those posts?
How?
How many? I mean, every 10 feet or something?
One's probably missing, yeah, now. So when I heard the machines, a machine going on on Friday, I went down there and Wayne Tollman was the contractor who was doing the work. Didn't know what was going on. I just wanted them to understand that there was an adjacent survey right there. My survey comes, I think, within 19 feet of the back end of the house. To me, when I approached, several members of the Caton family were looking after the existing spring, which is just cement tiles, and looking over that. So I approached them and let them know about the line, which I had assumed someone had, would have told them, they knew the survey work was going on. This isn't a big secret, so when, after we got done, you know, the conversation jumped around quite a bit. But when I tried to explain where the line was, the reason for the cedar post, and then proceeded to ask about their intentions for using the well. They proceeded to say that they had claim to it, which they do not. And that's well established by the Agency of Natural Resources, and there is nothing in the deed that grants any water rights to that house from my property.
So how did the Agency of Natural Resources get involved?
Well, I think you know the answer to that. Well, Carl Fuller was involved because he's the wastewater engineer for the district. And because of Mike McGlynn's development permit for wastewater and septic. And if the Dagels were going to, you know, that would have affected his permit based on where their water system was or his claim to be, as well as their wastewater. I also was contacted by Chase &amp; Chase, who was the engine firm that was hired by the Dagels. And they tried to extract information from me about what I knew about the site. And I asked them to reciprocate, which of course they didn't. So the long and short of it, without dragging this out, is my intention is to ask the town what they know regarding any enforcement proceedings that are going on there. And Marie Caton, excuse me, indicated that she needed to take pictures for you specifically, Diana, for whatever compliance is in the works. So I, I'm at a loss really knowing what the town's involvement is here. And my intention is to, you know, is to protect my property. What's theirs is theirs and what's mine is mine. And there is no due to rights to that house, and they have to understand that. And if they do try to claim that well, I think it has implications for Mike McGlynn's development plans across the road and the Angworth Road because of the overshadow notice for potable water and wastewater.
Yeah, now that you say that, I do recall that Mike came here one time with a letter that he got, and he was quite surprised.
He's been here several times, actually.
He has, yeah.
And I believe the town has had a hand with the Caton family for a number of years.
We have, yeah.
And so I would like to know, first of all, if the Tollmans were hired by the town or as part of any enforcement issues either. Is there an enforcement?
Well, I can tell you what the enforcement, I mean, the previous Select Board, before I was on it. They did decide to take this enforcement, zoning enforcement, to court. There is a piece of our zoning ordinance that says that you can't have unregistered vehicles and miscellaneous junk around in view of the public highway. And so that's basically what we've been trying to do is, there's been several court hearings that started during COVID, so there were like hearings where people actually showed up, but there's been, you know, at one point, Tanya's ex came and got a bunch of the vehicles, so that was an improvement. It was reported to the court, but they kept getting, you know, they gave another month and another month. And the town hasn't, you know, I think we talked about this maybe at our last meeting, hasn't decided what we would, the town wants, except for the place to be cleaned up. But we haven't taken any steps. I've been taking pictures along there regularly to tell the attorney what to report.
So the only thing the town's really been doing is hassling them over the zoning ordinance for junk vehicles and junk. We haven't, we have been in contact with the Enforcement and Compliance Department of ANR for, you know, the fact that they were, people were living in the house without a source of water and without a septic system. So that's all kind of under the state's purview, so the town really hasn't gotten involved with that, except to try to be aware of what's been happening. And, yeah, so that's the only thing the town really is, is doing with that property is trying to get the junk cleaned up, or at least have a fence around it, if, if nothing else.
So the town is not acting on the state's behalf with regard to any enforcement or?
No, the state doesn't.
And why did Marie suggest that she needed to send pictures to you?
Yeah, I've like, I've been taking pictures of, like I said, every time there's a court hearing coming up and the attorney wants to know what's up, I go take some pictures.
And this is?
But I didn't ask her to take.
For the town. For the town. But this is about the junk, the junk.
Whether, yeah, so several times.
It's important to know that Nate Fisk, who was the person that reneged, who was the last owner of the house, and reneged on his mortgage and flew down, thought that he owned to the brick. And cleared the trees and deposited a lot of junk between the house and brick, which has now been determined to be mostly on my property.
On your property, yeah.
And that's been a source of anxiety for a long time for me to try to figure out how I could clean that up. Because my only viable option is to, to access that part of my property is through the Dagel. And I'm unable to do that because of the contentious issue of, you know, the nature of how they were handling everything. Had a couple of confrontations with them over the course of time. So this last one, when I had the conversation with them, started off congenial enough, and they had actually offered to start cleaning up that portion of my property that had a lot of still debris and litter on it. And I thanked them several times and emphasized it, that I was very grateful that they would consider doing that. However, the sticking point was the well. And one of the members of the family actually confronted me about it. And, you know, got in my face and looked me up for it and told me to get off, get out of here, even though I was standing on my own property. And I'm kind of sick and tired of that, you know. It's nothing to do with the town, but if there's any leverage for them to clean up that portion of my property, as they're cleaning up their own, you know, that would be great. You know, I'm willing to do my part to help out or, you know, to some reasonable degree, deal with the cost of, of that cleanup. But, you know, a note in certain terms is that well, go with that house. And, you know, that, that well was dug when nobody was looking. It's just a shallow dug well. They could very easily move it onto their side of the property. However, having said that, I do not know how that affects Mike McGlynn's, you know, permit process. If there, I was told in dealings between Mike McGlynn and Carl Fuller from the DEC that they needed a drilled well. It couldn't be a service well. that they needed a drilled well. It couldn't be a service well.
I know, exactly. So that's basically just kind of a, there might have been a little seepage or a spring there, and they just kind of dug a hole and put some cement tile in and?
Well, it's, it's been, people have been living in that house, like you said, maybe ten years, up until maybe ten years ago, when the last owner left, and they've been using that, that water source.
Yeah, that, they might have been using it. There were actually several water sources that they were trying to use on my property. In fact, another smaller one with a black water pipe that went for some considerable distance up onto my hill, across the ground, across the brook, and into a back window. So, you know, and subsequently, I also found out that a portion of the existing septic is on my land, and the overflow does go onto it and into the brook and into the Kingsbury branch.
There is a septic system, existing septic?
Existing septic system.
Where is it?
Yeah, it's, I don't know exactly where it is, it's in the front, somewhere along the brook.
In the front part, front of the house?
Top part of the house. Which I was told apparently is gonna be the, where the replacement septic is gonna be. I'm assuming this is all going on with state oversight, town oversight. I'm, I'm not sure. That's why I'm here before you is to just ask and share with me what you know so that I can decide the next steps myself.
I wouldn't think it could have a septic system in there without them designing it in.
Right, and so they were, I think when Chase &amp; Chase went out there, it was when that program first started, or A and R got quite a lot of money to help people repair failed septic systems. And, but that program has been kind of on hold because they got overwhelmed with applications. And I think that, at that point, nothing would be, yeah, the, the next step would be for them to design a system. But I don't know, I mean, that supposedly is paid for by the state also, if the program was up and running. But.
So is the D E C enforcement officer involved?
He is, he's been there, yeah.
And has, is he, is he the one that's documenting the cleanup? Or is that just because it's a town zoning ordinance that really the junk and the stuff is?
Yeah, really.
The town is overseeing the cleanup, but as far as the water?
Who's overseeing it?
Uh, well, we've been paying a lawyer to help us with the court hearings and?
Yeah, but he's overseeing the cleanup?
No, he's not overseeing the cleanup, but the fact that we have a court, whatever you call it, notice a violation that's going through the courts, that's basically the town overseeing the cleanup.
Who's in direct oversight of the cleanup?
So they, they have to clean it up or the court proceedings will continue.
Nobody's overseeing the cleanup. That's not.
It's up to them to clean it up.
At some point, we'll report to the, to the court whether we think they've complied with the order. I, yeah, most of this stuff is still on email. I don't have it all printed out, but.
During the work that Wayne Tomlin was doing, he, they had already placed spill on my side of the line. And they actually had three good sized boulders that they stacked up on top of each other like a snowman. It was actually on my side of the line. And they asked me if they could leave it there. I mean, if someone's not directly there, and it's a good thing that I went down there. Because this is the kind of thing that's gonna happen. They're gonna take what they want. And, you know, I, I have, you know, the right to protect my own property.
So I have a question for you, Tim. Did you ever share with them or give them a copy of the survey that you had so that they actually know where the line, property line is?
I filed it in the town land records. They knew that the survey was going on. I did not give them a direct copy of it. But it is accessible to them.
I know. They have to go and look at it though, which.
It's well within their right, and it's, and it's perfectly, it's not my responsibility.
But you said you marked.
Just as much as it is their responsibility to come to me and tell me that they're gonna start doing work right up against my boundary line with a machine.
But you, but you did mark it, mark it. I mean, they pointed out.
It is marked, and I'm quite frankly surprised that it's still there. If they're still there, I thought they would pull them out. But they, to their credit, they only, I think, one of them dismissed it.
So I went there Friday, cause I saw a bunch of trucks, and I was trying to report to the lawyer because the next hearing was today. And I met the nephew that, who has been authorized to work on the place for Tanya, who's moved out. And it looked like, over by that pile of rocks, there were some piles, but it almost looked like they were debris that was gonna be taken out. Those were, those, yeah, they were just.
I'm not sure, because once the conversation became confrontational.
He left.
Everybody left.
Yeah.
I was told that Tanya is no longer living there. She broke up with her ex or whomever. And the nephew is now, has intentions to move into the house.
But Tanya still owns that property.
That's right.
So Tanya is still liable for what's wrong on that property.
And so the problem becomes is you have so many different members of the family involved in making decisions over this one building. Who is the right person and who is ultimately responsible? I mean, the whole cast of characters is, is essentially changed down there.
It's still Tanya.
Except, yeah.
Yeah, if she'd washed her hands of it, there's not much.
But I get confronted by somebody who may not even, may or may not even be a member of the family. I do not know the man's name who confronted me.
Yeah, there were several, several young men down there when I stopped.
Yes.
That was after you had been there.
And they shared details of that?
Yeah, they told me their side of the story. And, and I gotta look, got to look at the debris on your side, but that's, none, none of that is visible from the town road, so that's really not part of the enforcement action.
Not the current one.
Right.
Not this current.
So even though all that trash was a result of, of that, I, I have no recourse for dealing with that through the town's enforcement.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, much of that refuge isn't really visible from the town road, Diana.
Right, I mean, there's a whole, I had never been out in the back of the house.
Until now that they've squared it out, it made it visible.
The refuse in the brook from the previous owner?
Not in the brook.
Well, adjacent to the brook.
There's tires and there's refuge pretty much scattered in there. And they had a three sided shed that they were throwing the garbage in there, the household garbage, and the bears got into it and scattered it all over the hillside. Alls I'm asking for is the property line to be respected, the well to be acknowledged, that they do not have rights to it.
I, you know, I think someone's gonna have to hire a lawyer to figure that out.
But it's, I mean, the property line is established.
No, and the, the well.
Oh, excuse me.
Now.
Whether there's.
They're, they're gonna have to hire a lawyer. Cause I've already established that it's on my property.
But you've established that you think it's not in their deed?
I'm pretty confident that there's nothing in the deed, because I think several people have made title searches to find it. Including Chase &amp; Chase and others. I believe Carl Fuller and his staff looked quite hard for it. And I was told that they could not find it, and I was actually told that I actually could go and remove it. And so in order, in order to avoid any further confrontation with them and also not to initiate any retaliatory action against me, I left it there for now. If they wanna use that pile, that's fine. Take it out and put it on the wrong side of the line. So essentially what you're telling me then is that, is that the town is really limited to the cleanup of the junk? And that even though a portion of that junk lies on my side of the line?
From the previous landowner.
From the previous landowner, which the same junk is from the previous landowner.
Yeah, a lot of it is.
Yeah.
Do I have any recourse through the town's absence to be able to get that cleaned up? And if that's the case, they're not, they're probably not gonna give me permission to access that junk through their property to get it cleaned up.
What is it? Looks like some?
It's a mixed match. I, I mean, you were there on the site, you saw it.
Yeah, but I, I just saw across the, you know.
Well, I bet you.
They, they said that it was some, huh?
He probably hasn't been over and picked it up, looked at it. Shit, shit.
They said it was some.
There's all kinds of junk. It's aluminum siding and gutters and tires and there were remnants of a burn bail, several burn bails, unenamel. So I guess I would ask that if there's any leverage for the town to help me get that cleaned up, I would appreciate it.
I'm thinking of Greenup Day. If there was a way, I would be glad to be part of a crew to help you clean that up. If there's a way that we can get it into a, a truck or something. And then we could just, you know, it wouldn't cost you anything to have it hauled to the dump. The town would, would, would use, be just part of what we would collect on, on Greenup Day. And I think we could put together a crew to, to clean that up. We once did that up on the Cory Road for an illegal dump.
Will they allow it on the property?
Well, it's on his property. We have to access it.
How are you gonna get to his property? Are you gonna walk through the brook?
Well, I'm thinking it must be some land there between the brook and their property line. You could walk from the highway. How far is it?
You could come in from Route fourteen, and you can come in with the shared boundary with Mike and Dyleen Richardson. But you would have to go completely around the Dagel property. It would be through Alders and wet ground across the brook, and it would be fairly difficult to get to it. And then coming directly from town farm, it's a steep hill. On my side.
Yeah, how far, I mean, it's not that far down, I've noticed now that the leaves aren't on the trees, but it is a climb.
It's a climb, and we could get a machine close to it, a truck. But it still would be a lot of climbing up and down. You'd have to constantly cross the brook and then go up and down. It's a short, but it's a fairly steep grade.
But for Route fourteen?
This is up coming from?
Town farm.
The house side, my house side.
Okay, but to get to it from Route fourteen, is it also up and down or?
You would be on the side, right where the brook comes. It's right where the brook is behind the house. Close underneath through fourteen into the Kingsbury branch, and you would have to navigate that brook.
Oh.
And then you could come in from the other side, further on, on the Ainsworth Road. But we'd have to clear a path around the property. Have they indicated that they are no longer willing to work with me now?
No.
We haven't heard anything from them.
You just said you had a conversation with them, and they've told you their version of the story.
Yeah, and we walked around the back of a, I had never been around the south side of the building. There's a lot of stuff back there, but it's not within view, so it wasn't part of our enforcement action.
Well, it's in the wetlands, isn't it?
Oh, I know that's not part of our enforcement action.
Well, I would think the state would be ready to come up and force that.
Having the state do anything to help out is like, actually kind of, it's, it's a fallacy.
Well, what I'm trying to understand is exactly the beginning and the end of what the town would deem satisfactory cleanup. Because most of it isn't visible from Route fourteen.
No, it's visible from the town road though.
And even on my side, it's visible on, from the town.
But I mean, the town, the, the Ainsworth Road is a town road.
Right, so most of it is visible from, from that road, but you're saying that the cleanup is only limited to the Dagel property only? Even though the, the junk that's on my side of the line is a result of the Dagel property?
Well, like I said, it's a, the zoning ordinance says miscellaneous junk that's within the view of a public highway. I don't have a copy of it here, but.
I do actually have a copy of it.
And who determines the view?
View, whether you can see it.
I guess it would be the zoning administrator.
The zoning administrator is, is who decides it.
Here, and I'll let you find it.
I mean, what I'm afraid you're gonna tell me is that you're gonna limit the town's authority to, at the boundary line, and that still leaves me with a problem of trying to get that junk cleaned up.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to help you get it somewhere so that we can get rid of it on Greenup Day. And I could probably find some other people that would also want to help as well. I think there are a lot of people who will know. But I have to look back at what, what we actually gave. I don't have it in front of me, but we actually gave.
The notice of violation.
As a notice of violation.
So with, with the actual work that Wayne Tomlin is doing now, now that there's additional boulders that are being placed on my property as a result of the cleanup work, do I have no recourse?
You, you have all, I mean, the town really probably can't help get involved in that situation, but again, hiring, you know, having a lawyer notify them that they have, you know, put that stuff on your property without your permission. It kind of leaves it on them to remove it. I don't think the town really can get involved in that type of property issue between two landowners.
No, but the reason the machine is there is because the town mandated that they clean up the place.
In any district, uh, there, oh, well, in, in all districts of the town, any motor vehicle which is not state inspected and all miscellaneous junk must be stored in an enclosed building or placed in a rear yard and screened from view from any public way. That's all we got to go on, and that's what the, that's what the court enforcement action is about.
So it doesn't make any differentiation between property boundaries? It just says that there's junk that is visible from the?
Well, but this enforcement action was against the owner of that property. It wasn't against you or?
Right, we didn't give you a notice of violation either, so.
No, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that the reason the junk is there is from, from that property. I mean, it's all one.
Yeah, yeah, we understand that.
Just spread over onto my side because the previous owner thought they owned what they didn't own. They've been willing to clean this up for a long time, but just can't seem to get there. And get it cleaned up, and that's what I'm really after, and I, I want them to respect the boundary line, and now as a result of the machine work that's going on as mandated by the town, I'm getting additional impacts to my property with placement of boulders that did not belong there.
We could contact the person, there was a name mentioned for who was running the excavator or whatever, and tell them that they placed that.
He was, he was a witness to the conversation and confrontation.
We, I think as a town, we can tell that person who put that stuff there that that's not the Dagel property.
We didn't hire them.
I know, but they.
How can we tell them anything?
But they're there because the town.
So if they agreed to, if they had talked at one time about picking up some of that stuff that's on your side of the, on, on your property? If they agreed to work on that, would you let them leave the rocks where they are? I mean, the rocks is just like a little yard stump.
Are you negotiating on behalf of them?
No, on behalf of you.
What does this have to do with the town ordinance? I mean, I don't see why.
Okay, well, you keep trying to spread it over onto helping you on your side, so I'm just trying to think of some way that something could be negotiated, but would help both sides.
I don't think we need to negotiate anything. I don't think we have a point, Diane, I have to negotiate.
Well, whatever.
So basically.
That's the only way you're gonna get anything done.
Is this an ultimatum by you that I negotiate either from moving it off?
Trying to have to.
I mean, they have a machine down there. They could fix that quite, quite often, quite, quite quickly.
I think, I think the town could ask the person who operates the machine, let them know that the rocks were placed there. It's not the Dagel's property, so, and the landowner has requested that they be moved onto the Dagel property. I think the town could make that call and just make that request. Whether the person would actually do that or not is, would be up to them. If they didn't, then, you know, the town doesn't have much beyond that that it could do, but we could, we could make that call. I'm happy to do that. I don't see how that's, you know, not something that the town couldn't do to help out this situation. From my point of view, anyway.
I agree completely. And then the next step would be to consider how we approach them in terms of cleaning up your property adjacent to theirs by giving us access, giving you access to do so. And because all we're looking for is access briefly across their land to get into something that is on your property but not associated with your problem. And that can be, that can be a request.
And again, it could be shut down by them.
What's that, what's that? You're gonna request what?
To give us access across their land.
To clean up.
To clean up junk associated with the previous landowner on their, associated with their property that has ended up on Tim's land.
I'd also like to give them the opportunity to remove that well. Otherwise, I'll remove it myself. it myself, so they can use that casing. Otherwise, it's gonna disappear. And this isn't really a town's responsibility or concern, but I'm not intimidated by these folks.
Well, water rights are. Water rights are a concern.
I will go down and clean that up, and I will protect that, you know, what I pay taxes on, or if I can adequately deal with it, I will ask for an abatement. My wife won't even use that side of the property because she's afraid, and we shouldn't have to live that way.
Right, agreed.
And again, I'm happy to come and help, help you clean that up.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that we are willing to help.
So, if there's any, if anything else further develops, you know, I would, I would appreciate being kind of captain loop as far as what's going on down there. Do you know at this point if there's gonna continue to be machine work?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Have they asked that the town give their blessing and they're okay that everything is satisfactory at this point in time to meet the town ordinance?
No, they haven't asked, no.
When will that determination be made?
Well, we just, we just had court today.
Today, and they gave another month. So, I was hoping that that would be encouraging to have them continue the cleanup, which they have been doing. Whether Tallman is gonna come back, I don't know. I have no way of knowing.
So, his machinery is gone now?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, I mean, you know who the person is from A and R. We've talked about him before. So, and you, you know, I am frustrated with that whole process from the state. For other places in town, it seems to, nothing really seems to come of anything that, from the enforcement and compliance people for either any property, the property across the road, Marie Cadence, you know, they've been working on that for years and it hasn't changed much at all. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the state really doesn't do much at all to help with any of these situations, even when it's under their purview. So, you know, I'm kind of frustrated with the state about just what they do to help in these situations, but when it is under their jurisdiction.
And sadly, the court also is not a very good, I mean, all they've been able to do is ask the town to negotiate with the landowner to try to get things fixed. The court's not gonna send out somebody. All they can do is send out an order, maybe a fine.
Which won't be paid.
So, it sounds like, Diana, you have some level of involvement there. You've gone there, you've been corresponding with the folks. They've insinuated to me that they need to send you pictures.
I don't know where she got that.
At some point, you're gonna, the town, you're acting on behalf of the town to say you have now rectified this situation and you have no...
Diana's been working with our town lawyer who's overseeing the court case for the notice of violation. She's been the contact person with the lawyer. That's, that's her.
Michael, the attorney asked that we take some more pictures. Michael and I talked about getting together this week, and we couldn't manage to find a time when we could do it at the...
I guess I'm trying to understand what the pictures would do if you have no contacts at the...
It shows the court the situation, the progress. It's like, or lack of progress.
Right, yeah, in the past, it's been like, one, they got rid of two vehicles, and then they brought in another one. And that went on for a couple of months. So, I would have to report to the attorney that...
And I was initially working with the same attorney, and I also took photographs, so that, you know, he had something to show the court about what the situation looked like.
How it was developing.
So, there's a few years of documentation of what that place has looked like.
And a few months ago, the attorney came out, Michael Tarrant and Bob Martin, zoning administrator, he and, the three of us went over there and took a bunch of pictures. Actually, the attorney took the pictures, wrote a long letter to Tanya with the pictures and a long, a list of, of things that had to be cleaned up. Sheet metal on the far left side of the property, tires and rims, rusted dual bug truck, truck cap, sheet metal and other items in the fire pit, the purple Jeep with no inspections, the C-Doo, the green truck behind the house, other junk items, including basketball hoop tires, miscellaneous metal, and so on. And that was probably not the first correspondence, but that was on August 2nd.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Yeah.
That's the most recent one that we've talked about.
But there is no language that says only on the, only on the property. It just says...
It's focused on their property.
Even though that junk is visible from the town right away as a result of that ownership.
It's, it could be our error.
Which junk?
The stuff in the brook.
The stuff, everything behind the house. It's all one big pile of stuff. It's just my line happening to go through approximately half of it.
Guess we don't have a, I don't, I guess we don't really have a perfect answer for you. That's, I mean, we can send you a copy of, of what we sent the attorney.
Yeah, and I, speaking for myself, I wasn't aware of where the property line was. You might have just looked at a spreading, a spread of junk.
I can share it with you right now if you would like to take a look at it. I have a copy of it. It's also on the town land records.
I think, yeah, I think it'd be easier for us to spend the time on it, go into their town records and just take a peek, as opposed to doing it now.
But they did point out to me that they, you know, one of the markers, and they did say that you had told them that the rocks were one foot over on your boundary and...
Well, they, they weren't there that day, and during the result of the work, they put it there. You know, it's like, I can't, nothing saved it, you know, it's like, despite my best efforts to identify the line, and next thing you know, as a result of cleanup work, which is mandated by the town, I have further encumbrances on the property. And it isn't getting better, it's getting worse.
On your side, yeah.
I don't think it's getting a lot better around that house.
What?
It ain't getting, hadn't been getting a lot better around that house. It may be, I ain't been up there since I've been up there with a excavator.
Yeah, I noticed they took a piece, there's a little entry or something on the front of the house that they took down. There was, a bunch of stuff was piled there, and they replaced a piece of roofing. I don't know what they're doing inside, whether he plans to live there right away. Nobody's been living there for a long time.
Did they express their intentions to you so well when you had the conversation with?
Oh, yeah. That always comes up, and I say, has nothing to do with the town, so...
Okay, well, that's good to know, because now I know that that's something that's on me to have to deal with.
Yeah, the well, the well definitely is something that you have to deal with.
So, the, uh... The deed says the real property described above is conveyed subject to the following: all easements, covenants, conditions, and restrictions of record, all legal zoning, building, and other laws, ordinance, and regulations. But who's to tell what all those easements are? Yeah, I don't know. Do you have a copy of this?
What is it, the zoning ordinance?
No, this is the D.
For Dagel.
Dagel D.
I don't have it.
You can have this.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, my understanding and my sense is that several, several of the representatives for the Dagel family have looked specifically for the D language regarding water rights, and they did not find anything.
And those are professional, not just a family?
And it was actually met, um, the requirement of the wastewater system design through D E C.
D E C.
And because that had a bearing on the wastewater design, where the existing water, portable water sources were.
So, whoever did the design for Mike did not notice that. He wasn't aware of that.
Well, I don't think...
Spring tile being there.
I don't think anybody knew it was there because it wasn't legal to begin with, and someone just, nobody was looking. Someone went in, dug a hole, stuck some tile in there. I don't think it was used very much because I found an alternative source of water that was further up on my land with black water pipe running across the top of the ground.
And that was done probably by the present owner and whatever parties were involved with them. That wasn't a former, a former owner?
Yeah, I believe it was a former owner.
Former owner, yeah.
But once the Dagels acquired, what's that?
Had the pipe split? Like it was frozen?
Not that I could tell. Black inch, inch and a half, I guess it was, or one inch wide. I couldn't tell if it was split or not. You know, it had come a pile of sections No, I think the Dagels are just assuming that they have certain rights that they hold with the house, and they do not.
Yeah, well, it sounds like from what you've done and what you've been told by those different engineers that, that you're correct in your assumption.
Well, yeah, but engineers aren't tail searchers.
The problem is, I'm gonna have to, it's gonna be financial expense on my behalf to prove everything. When the burden of proof should be on them, not me.
Which may be true, but in reality, they probably won't do it. And there's very few enforcement mechanisms that we can actually deal with.
It would be a good investment for them if they did, and they won, because they would have a water source, but they're not gonna do it.
Not gonna do it.
I don't think...
That water source doesn't live anymore.
No.
The house always had water problems, sort of back when I was a kid.
Really?
But if they have an approved wastewater system, they must, they must, it must come with a condition for the placement of the water.
Usually, the, yeah, permit is issued for wastewater disposal and water supply.
And water supply at the same time.
Yeah.
I think that's actually required.
And the record as well, there.
Yeah, but there's no design.
There's no design.
No, there's not. The Chase and Chase went out and did some test holes, that's all.
There's no, there's no approved design that we're aware of.
So, the existing system is not, is a fail and not designed?
Failed and never, it's failed and never redesigned, and it was probably...
Discharged right into the ground.
It was probably put in there long before the state oversaw.
Or saw anything.
So, I do know that if they, before they'll get an approved design, they have to have a water supply.
They have to. They go right together.
And wastewater system, they go to that.
And that also could potentially conflict with Mike McLynns, who has an approved development land that involves wastewater and portable.
Right, but on a condition of this other water source, it sounds like. It sounds like that it wasn't totally approved because...
It wasn't at first, but from my understanding, it is now approved, officially approved. No further concerns.
How'd they do that?
Pardon me?
I wonder how they did that, if they raised a concern about the well being with them.
Because I believe D E C looked into, to a certain extent, I don't know exactly what they did, but determined that there was no water associated with portable water.
So, therefore, Mike's, Mike's was okay, but...
Or Mike has a different supply.
Yeah, he has a different supply.
Well, no, the issue was that the spring was within the shield for the septic system.
On Mike's property, yeah, right.
Shadowing area or whatever.
Which you really don't want.
Can you inform whoever is helping the Dagels try to, obviously, you know, it sounds like they're getting state help to try to get a septic system in there, and obviously the, would seem to me, who doesn't really know a whole lot about this, that they can't really get that until they can prove that they have a potable water source. So...
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen in the near future. Ryan McCall had been working with Tanya to try to get her to apply for the state program, and she never got her paperwork together. Now, it's gone, so who knows what's gonna happen.
Right. Can Tim inform the people for the state that were trying to help them with that, that they, that the previous water sources to that property are on his property, and he's not willing to give them rights to that water? They don't have rights.
I can't imagine who, who they would contact.
Okay, well, it must be somebody from the state that's helping them.
There's nobody helping them with this.
Okay.
The, like I said, Chase and Chase did some test holes. Whether they ever got paid for that through the state program, I don't know.
Can Tim send Tanya Dagel or the property owners a formal letter saying that, I do not grant you any access to water on my property, and then would it be in their side of the argument to hire a lawyer to challenge that? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the legal proceedings are.
I'm not sure either, but we can ask our attorney.
I did ask our attorney today. He said it's private. Well, would boundary issues and water supply issues are not town issues?
Right, I know they aren't town issues. I'm just trying to...
Get ahold of Chase and Chase and find out what they did do, they did do.
Could do that.
I would think that you should put that much of a foot forward to find out, you know, so that Tim would have an idea if he had like standout or not.
Well, we have no, I mean, the reality is that we've got no approved plan. Doesn't exist. Hasn't been filed as far as anybody knows.
But does anybody know if Chase and Chase just flat ass said it's not gonna be able to be approved?
There's some stakes in the front yard, so they...
Well, I'd be marking where they done the test holes.
That's just where the test wells are.
That's what I mean, yeah. I'm, I'm willing to call Chase and Chase, see if I can find out from them, but, you know.
Be eight places to start. I mean, it might not matter to anyone, talking to the lawyer, but.
It was Derek Evans on Chase and Chase.
Derek Evans?
Derek Evans, 802-249-4032.
32?
Have you talked to him?
What's that?
Have you talked to him?
He reached out to me to pick my brains about what was going on. I asked him to reciprocate once he found out, and he did not, of course. What's your choosing house? It's played, it's probably been in the water.
It's, yeah, I think it's...
Mine too. I'm guessing that it's not gonna happen.
They discovered that they don't have a water supply, so they're done with trying to get a wastewater. But then, they really can't live there.
Without a, without a drilled well.
Or, or a functioning septic system.
That's a whole nother level of...
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different thing, so...
Unless they, they go ahead and try to hook up to that well and claim that that's theirs, they don't have a legal right to it. And I still don't know how that affects the wastewater design either.
And, and we... If they do that, and they don't have a legal right, and you challenge that, then, you know, that's, again, that's the property owner dispute. It's not really, not really a town thing.
So, Tim, I'm sorry if we've frustrated you, but I hope this was at least a little...
No, not at all. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you.
Thank you for making the time.
And your time, and I would just ask that the town remain as impartial as it can with the proceedings with that family, negotiating otherwise, and stick to the zoning and the cleanup, and not make any further representations about what they can and can't do. And to the extent that you're willing to keep me informed about it, I'd appreciate it.
It's all reasonable.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. So, we are going to move on to, Chuck, sorry, it's a little later than we expected, but we're gonna move on to the town road report, if you don't mind.
Chuck, sorry, it's a little later than we expected, but we're gonna move on to town road report, if you don't mind.
Ask Alfie.
It's up to you guys, you're both here, so, you know. I know it's, it's, it's a shared duty at this point, but yeah, Alfie, if you'd like to give us just sort of.
So we've just been, been working in the shop a lot, worked on the Comex box, you guys approved last meeting. It's all set, it's being filled a little bit every day, as we clean the shop out. Uh, we have I, I bought some grates for the floor drains, that was a complaint by the, by the insurance company. So I've got those in place.
Did, you talk to Brandy at all about whether that would be paid for under that grant?
Uh, I did not.
Okay, so mention it and then when she comes back.
I thought it was just a.
This was the insurance company went through and.
Yeah, and they said you could buy some signs with lights on them and I forget what else, they bought some new desks at the office and.
And I can, I can ask.
All out of that six thousand dollars, I don't know if there's any, any of it left, but it seems like that's what the grant was for. Was to pay for those things that they recommended.
Uh, today I started building a, a metal rack for all the claw blades and grater blades and whatnot that are sort of leaned up against the building inside wall.
So that's another thing that, that he recommended, that those things not be leaning there so they could get, so that's another thing that might be paid.
Thing that was on the list, the checklist from the insurance company. So Ed Rowl started today, was his first day, he was able to get his physical, so I picked the workout in place. So I'll work him part-time as we need him then.
And he's, Robin got him on the drug list here?
Just waiting for a date.
A date? What do you mean?
So they can come test him.
Oh, they don't have to test him.
Reemployment, they have to.
Really?
Of course they do.
Reemployment?
Absolutely.
He's gonna have C D L or something, he gotta be tested.
Well, I thought they did that, it's part of the C D L thing, I mean, and then he goes into the rotation for the, yeah, random testing.
The D L T physical does not test for drugs. They do take a urine sample, but it's only for diabetes and.
Other chronic conditions.
That's all I can think of, I mean, we've been, we're ready for snow, I mean, the only other thing I might do is, is start putting wings on. But there's not a huge rush for that.
So trucks, trucks are pretty much ready to go?
Yes, yeah, I did notice there was two trucks that were, inspections were out, so I made an appointment, one of them is out to Hartwick now. Hopefully there's no, nothing failing it.
Well, they both went to charity, so they should be in the chain.
Yeah, I think they were looked over, and then we, I looked them over, checked all the lights and whatnot, so I don't think there's gonna be anything, anything major. The next one that'll go will be the, the low pro that needs a sticker also, but that's, that's new.
It's basically, yeah. Much as good as this is gonna get.
It's just one of those things that I don't wanna, you know.
Be stuck with them no longer. For the truck you can't. Do we have a date for salt delivery?
Uh, they told me it'd be this week, so I expect it either today or tomorrow.
I'm sorry, a date for what?
Salt.
Delivery, okay.
For our delivery.
And does that just come in one delivery or?
Uh, comes, yeah, on a ten wheeler.
Ten wheeler, so.
And so that's all we can fit into the shed, so. I think, I think they're a little behind because everything was slow in the contract process and all that, so now everybody's now this contract is in, everybody's getting their, you know, trying to get their salt shipped, so. I might give them a call tomorrow just to see if we're, you know, see what, if they have a arrival date, but they didn't tell me it would be this, this time, so. And we've got enough, we've got a couple loads there anyways to get started with. So we're not in dire straits, but I, I am a little bit concerned too, I'd be, I'd feel much better if we had a lot there.
If it was there. Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, other than that, unless there's questions, I don't have much else.
The only thing I did, and I told Alfie today, that Paul Sury called me Friday and wanted to know if the town crew could come up and dig test holes over here where the new fire station's gonna be. And I told him if he could work around snowstorms, that it probably wouldn't be a problem. But.
Yeah, it's up to. It's really up to you guys.
And now this property line deal with the town and the fire department.
Yeah, I, I don't think you wanna do it just yet.
Got me a little bit twisted, so I wouldn't do it.
They gotta wait until we figure this out.
Why are they waiting now until it's almost time for the ground to freeze?
Well, probably because they realize they need to do it now.
The ground does freeze.
Well, I was in Fisher Auto Parts when he called me and I answered the phone and I should've waited till afterwards and talked to him, but I didn't feel that I could say a lot in Fisher Auto, but they're worried about spending a thousand dollars getting an excavator up there, but they turn around and do a, a survey on that lot after you'd had one done?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, we need to improve the relationship with the fire department.
I think first thing you ought to do is request, see what they got for money stored away.
Well, there.
I wonder if Brandy has given them their sixty-five thousand dollars for this year? Well, maybe not, because by, by the time all the taxes are in, she'll probably have to hand that over and they haven't done anything to spend it yet.
Well, that's, yeah, how they spend it is up to them. Is up to them, we don't control that, once we've allocated.
Right, I realize that, but they, you know.
We can't withhold that. We can't.
Was that for the fire station you made?
Yeah, their sixty-five thousand dollars for this year.
It's eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-five thousand, okay.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Sit in their account or sit in ours?
It's a strange, a strange relationship right at the moment, I think, and it would be nice to resolve it, cause it's all the same town.
Well, the part that gets, that bothers me the most is, is they used to wash the aprons in town. At the foot of Cabot Road, Town Farm Road, South Woodbury, out here, and they stopped doing it, they won't do it anymore. But they wanted to use our truck, roll wood chips into over here, now they want the excavator. I just cleaned out the uh, hydrant over here for them. So you would think it's not, it doesn't seem to me though, like that they're, it's a pretty goddamn one-sided deal.
It can appear that way, yeah.
It can?
Well, I'm being tactful on camera here. Yeah, I mean, I, we should probably wait and have the rest of this conversation when we actually have.
Except I'm not gonna be here, I'm not, I just sort of voiced it right now.
No, that's fine, okay, I'm glad you voiced it, um.
What are they test, what are they digging for?
Cold, I guess.
I mean, if they're, if, if they're.
I'm assuming that it's probably fuel. Tannation fuel, I'm guessing.
I mean, that's, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing something like that, they're gonna have to have um, contractor do it anyways, if they're doing test holes for like foundation and stuff like that, you'd think they'd wanna have their.
If it's hazardous.
If it's hazardous material, it has.
H hazardous material, they have to have a licensed
Contractor.
Contractor there to.
To oversee the sampling process.
There's gonna be
But we don't know if that's what they're.
Sampling, they're just looking to have the digging done.
Yeah, we don't know what they want the test bits. So the reality is, I mean, until we understand the ramifications, the answer is probably no.
They start digging around that, that power pole where they want that land, they might wish they not.
Well, let's, let's wait till we have a discussion. So we're gonna, we're gonna cease this conversation until we have the opportunity to talk with.
If you would like.
Chance Bhat and Paul Sury.
I am happy to provide remote access to the next meeting if you would like to be there.
I wish you would.
Okay, I will.
There's no problem with that. Contract, we should probably just, it worked out well in the past.
So they, they couldn't make it tonight, so they said they could make it on the twenty eighth.
Right, they told them to have meetings tonight, so they weren't able to come, so.
They knew I was leaving on the Thursday too.
That could be true. It's, we don't know that for sure, they didn't say that. You can, you can, you can, you can voice your concerns.
Make sure that you can be here digitally, and we'll get the biggest screen that we can, you can stand up right close to it.
Catch me on a good day, I won't even meet, I can make a video.
Just need audio, we can provide plenty of volume for that. We do need to, I think Brandy would appreciate it if the select board approved the road salt contract. I did sign it in order to have this thing happen expediently, um but for Brandy and the auditors that she has to deal with, I bet she would love to have something in the select board uh, minutes that the select board actually approved the, this year's salt contract.
Can you tell a little bit about the contract?
Yes, so, um the con, the only option we really had after several little explorations was with Barrett Trucking Company. And they get their salt from Cargill and they were given the figure of eighty-eight dollars per ton. So that's what the contract for this year is for, it's with Barrett Trucking. Um, they're based, I think over in the Burlington area somewhere.
Barrett Trucking?
Barrett Trucking, yeah.
They took over the DuBois Construction site, so that's.
That's right, that's why.
They're based at Winuski, I think it is.
Okay, yeah, to me, Winuski, Essex, Burlington, it's all kind of one place. Um, yeah, so they took, they took over DuBois Construction, they took over the, all of the different road salt contracts that DuBois oversaw with American Rock Salt. Unfortunately, Barrett Trucking has dealt in the past with Cargill, and so that's the company that they were dealing with. So, and the price that they negotiated with Cargill was eighty-eight dollars a ton. So, and that seemed to be the only option that we, that we really had. The state didn't have any kind of state contract that they were, uh, willing to share with towns like, like they've done in the past. Although we've tended to go with DuBois and American Rock Salt because the price was usually cheaper than the state contract. So so I guess I would make a motion that the select board approve the, this year's uh, road salt contract with Barrett Trucking for eighty-eight dollars a ton.
Second down motion?
Eighty-eight dollars a ton.
A second motion?
How, how much?
How many tons?
Yeah.
A hundred and seventy-five is what the contract is for, um, and whether we'll use that much or not depends on the winter, won't you?
Yeah, eighty-eight. On second I motion, did you second it already?
Yeah, and they don't hold us to that, it's just, it's just an estimate, so they have a sense of, you know, how much we'll, we'll want. So if we don't buy a hundred and seventy-five tons, they don't require us to pay for it. And if we need more, hopefully there will be more.
And hopefully it stays at eighty-eight.
It will stay at eighty-eight, yeah, that's it, well. Who knows in this world, in this time?
It's not that straightforward anymore.
Barrett's a pretty straightforward company, I don't think you'll have any trouble.
Okay, yeah.
Well, they're just chucking it, they still have to get it.
They are, they are able to use the, the depot that DuBois Construction had in, somewhere in Barry, I think.
It's on, I think it's on the.
Okay.
Between Montpelier and Middlesex.
Okay, all right.
Uh, so that was the motion, that was seconded, uh, all those in favor? So, motion approved for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three winter salt contracts.
So the other thing on the road report is the C V fiber installation, they're looking for permission to put in underground fiber in different town right of ways, different roads. And unfortunately, I just, the, the woman that I've been in contact with, Karen Koteki, sent me an email at five forty, I was probably already here, that she would like to attend the meeting tonight. And I was gonna set up a remote access so she could do that, but, um kind of finding out that she was willing to, and able to come after the fact, so. But I know the roads that she mentioned were somewhat puzzling to me a bit also, and Diana had some comments and questions which I did forward to Karen, and she mentioned that she would get back to us. However, she didn't do that before tonight's meeting, but basically.
Can she be invited to our next select board meeting?
She can.
Do we need to get this together before that? Cause they're not gonna do the work.
They, yeah, they need, they need permission in order to start the work.
They're not gonna start the work now, are they?
Yeah, they're ready to, they're ready to start, they're ready to go, yeah. They do, they are waiting for, you know, the above ground, most of the installation of the fiber will be poles, so they are working with Hartwick Electric to, some of the poles need to be replaced with longer poles, so there's clearance between the different companies that use their poles. C V Fiber has contracted with, is paying Hartwick Electric to put in the longer poles where they're needed, but they haven't started doing that yet. And so thi- this is another part where they aren't able to use poles. And so they'll be putting it underground, and a, a good part of it will be within the town right of way for.
And what are the roads, Michael?
So the roads mentioned by Karen was Rathburn Road, eighteen hundred and fifty feet.
That just seems so odd to me that.
Well, yeah, and then Skirbner Road is another one mentioned. Said two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine feet, and then there are pole attachments, and then there would be another thousand feet where there would be no poles. A Keen Farm Road, six hundred feet, didn't say where along Keen Farm Road, Dog Pond Road, thirteen hundred and fifty-one feet, again, I'm not sure where along Dog Pond Road. And then North Road, which is the one that's most puzzling to me, seven thousand feet.
Seven thousand feet?
Yeah, and I don't know whether they're trying to bring in, dig line all the way into the one camp on East Long that, where people live year round, and there, there's no electricity.
There's no electricity there.
So, I mentioned this, I was at a C V Fiber board meeting last week, and I mentioned that some of these roads seem didn't seem logical that they would even be wanting to put cable in there. And Diana brought up a number of questions, which you're more than welcome to share, and I did send those to Karen, but I haven't received a response, so it seems to me that what we ought to do is try to make sure that Karen.
Is intending our next meeting?
Yes, and that, that we can ask her these questions, or maybe we can resolve these questions.
I also would appreciate an actual map, I mean.
She did send maps.
I didn't get the map.
I think I, I did forward that stuff on to you guys, but I don't know if the maps came.
Yeah, I get the maps.
You got the maps? Okay.
With, uh, I don't know.
She just sent me, I just sent her, when I opened up my computer for this part of the meeting, she, that was when I found out that she wanted me to send her the link to the meeting, but that was the first time that she's informed me that she was gonna be coming. Um, and then she didn't respond to that, let me see what she said. If I can find it. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I told you I'd be happy to attend. So I, I'll be in touch with her tomorrow, but as, I guess as a general rule, and I'll ask our Alfie this question, are you okay with them, as long as you have input on what they're doing to, to be putting in, uh, you know, burying fiber cable along the, in the town road right of way? Or would you wanna know? Or would you want to know where and what, what their intentions are?
Absolutely.
Okay.
How you going to change the culvert?
Yeah, we need to know where they're, where they're planning on putting it. My preference, if at all, would be on the side of, like, off the travel portion of the road.
Okay.
How deep do they bury that stuff?
I don't know.
It says here somewhere, um, CV Fiber is proposing to install underground fiber encased in conduit within the town right of way in Woodbury. CV will plow, trench, or bore three-inch wide and three feet deep along roads, and lay two two-inch conduits on top of each other within two-by-three, with two-by-three hand holes approximately every five-hundred feet. The hand holes, S-H-O-L-E-S, will be flush with the ground. If ledge is present, a small excavator will be used, well, yeah, I think that.
There ain't no way they're going to put it down North Road, seven-thousand feet. The ledge sticking right up to the.
The ledge is in the road everywhere.
And I, I was, my understanding at some point that they said that they were only going to try to serve places that have electricity already, there's no electricity out there.
Well, she's off the grid, she's got generators and solar panels.
Yeah, but there's no, but yeah, off-grid, yeah, the one person who's out there probably doesn't even care about.
Well, yeah, I mean, I did, I questioned the North Road also, and.
Seven-thousand feet.
Doesn't seem like that's worth, well, I mean, they're trying to get it to everybody and not worry about so much about the investment, but, um, seems like there, there's a different road that they could.
The other one that confuses me is Skribner Road, going all the way up around the back, the part that's not even plowed. The class four section of Skribner Road that goes up and around and comes out Log Town, I don't know why they have to do that, because they.
Does somebody live there?
No.
No?
Terry fishing, but he's not.
Not on that side.
But it's like, like, why can't they just keep going down?
Well, that's why it would be nice to have this person here with us.
With us, and these maps suck, just, yeah, we've totally. I mean, not, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that they're well-intentioned, but they're parcel snapshot maps. There's nothing cohesive, it's impossible to understand the distribution and how it relates to other parts of our town system and the broader surroundings.
Yeah, if we could see the whole map.
We can't, you know, so you can't make, you can't make a justification based on, that's why I thought that there was actually more of them. These aren't maps, they're satellite photos.
Because what's the, what's the state recommendation on ditches? How deep you got to dig them?
Two feet.
Two feet.
Below the road surface.
Yeah.
You think they can't even get two feet?
I'd be goddamn surprised if most places in town they could.
Yeah.
You better run here with your stone meter, how often is that going to happen?
Doesn't happen.
Well, that's why, part of the problem with this, with the fiber is that it's not repairable. So if, if our excavator hits it, the whole line.
The whole line is toast.
You can't patch, patch.
Really? Oh my.
That's the problem with fiber, it's a great thing.
But it's totally destructive.
So with, with DigSafe, is, if, if there are towns that have CV, have the high-speed internet cable fiber buried, is that all registered with DigSafe?
DigSafe notifies some utilities, not all.
Uh-huh.
So it might not, that would have to be a verification.
Okay, yeah.
Which I'm sure would be a, a cost to CV Fiber to get onto that.
And it would, you also are going to want to make, have a stipulation in there, the county are responsible for hitting that.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, I don't know what our memorandum of understanding, all the fine points are in that, but, um, I mean, they're, I don't think that, I mean, they have a lot of money to work with, so I don't think, you know, expense on their end is a concern, they're just trying to, they're trying to get this started. And Woodbury has been slated to be, is one of the towns where they're, they're doing the first round of, of implementation. But it, you know, if I, like, I'm going to contact this person tomorrow, what do I need to let them? No, can you guys kind of help me come up with, we obviously have some questions about the roads that they've chosen. Let me write that down, and then.
And the distances along some of those roads, given the population.
And where, I mean, they just mentioned a road and they mentioned a number of feet, but we have no idea where, although I guess the map sort of shows it.
Yeah, it's hard to tell where.
It's really hard to tell exactly.
So, and then Alfie, you mentioned if they're going to be using, digging in the town right of way, it'd be on the, not in the road itself, but in, in the.
Off, off the travel.
Off the travel way.
Yeah, I'm surprised with all the people they've had running around on the road that they've.
Well, that's part of the problem. There are contractors that, some of them, a lot of them were.
Not from around here.
Not from around here, so, you know, they might have made these recommendations without a clue about who lives there, or.
Well, the one I talked to, the one, the first ones that are around here that ended up screwing up, and then there was another crew come in, they had a list of poles that they had to go around and check.
And check, yeah.
So somebody was setting them in that direction.
Well, yeah, they, I think Hardwick Electric did finally put together an inventory of their poles, which they used. And that's what they've done with Washington Electric also, is the, you know, the, Washington Electric had an inventory of their poles, and they used that inventory to, to know where to go, to check them out. And then they had to wait for Hardwick Electric, and actually, I think they paid to have the inventory of the poles in Woodbury, CV Fiber paid for the inventory of the Hardwick Electric poles in Woodbury, so that they could get this plan.
Hardwick Electric wouldn't be able to.
Uh, Hardwick Electric didn't have an inventory. So, um.
So there are a lot of poles noticed on, noted on these maps.
Yeah. So, so I have a question, and I know that other select board members have a question about the actual roads chosen. And Diana has typed some of those out, and I did send those to this person, and then we want to make sure that they're going to be putting the cable in. And then I'm going to write down to consult with the road commissioner before, with any of the work.
This is Cranberry Meadow, come on, and they get all these poles, but then, I don't know whether they stop, whether there aren't any poles along that part of the road.
Well, they might go through the, through the woods, or through the, you know, they don't all follow the road. Alright.
Yeah, I don't know.
Any, anything else that I should, and then obviously we would like her to come to the next meeting?
To show up at the next meeting.
Okay. It's too bad that she didn't communicate this to me quicker. But anyway, that's water over the dam. Anything else that I should share with her at all? So I have questions about the roads chosen, that any, any of the ditching work, that it, there'd be a consult, probably an onsite consult, I would imagine, with the road commissioner, and that any of the buried cable be in the, not in the traveled portion of the road.
Hell no, we have a culvert inventory, right? What, did they take that into account?
We have an outdated culvert inventory.
Wow, a few years ago.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty up to date.
We've been regular to date too, we've got culverts everywhere.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, that's, I would think that's going to be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
And I think you've got to tell them that they need to have a minimum of three feet in depth, because you go along clean culvert, uh, clean ditches out.
You're gonna, you're gonna.
I think they did mention that they would bury them at three feet.
But I thought that.
If they can get it.
Right.
Right, well, apparently they.
They think, they think they.
They say they can, so.
Well, they said they burying that sewer pipe down South Woodbury.
Well, that wasn't CV Fiber though.
That's true.
So one thing to make sure, ask them is to.
Expensive proposition.
Probably would get on through the DigSafe registry.
Okay.
Because it might not just be the town digging, they'll find that it could be a private contractor.
Somebody, yeah, like, trying to dig that sewer pipe.
Yeah.
Okay. And they probably already have a plan for that, they do seem to be kind of on the ball with this stuff, but I am a little surprised at the roads that they chose, but.
Well, hopefully we'll get some justification from them.
Well, I will, I will contact her tomorrow, and we'll definitely make sure that she's at the next meeting, and sounds like you'll be here too, Chuck, so.
Well, that's pretty much up to Alfie, huh?
Okay, yeah, no, it is, it is an Alfie, Alfie's.
Well, where are you from now?
We've always appreciated that you have not picked out.
That you have an opinion and are willing to say it.
How you think you'd do with that town's foot?
She's probably out of chair up there.
I wouldn't be there at all. I've got an idea to be two short words, I'll be in there.
Okay. So, oh, so we're, we're, we basically did our CV fiber update.
Actually, no.
No, oh, well.
Except for the.
Yeah, I think CV Fiber is definitely ready to start laying fiber in town, and they are kind of waiting on Hardwick Electric to get some poles that, that are needed. So, the other part of that update is appointments to the CV Fiber Board. Right at the moment, I am listed as an alternate, alter.
Alternate.
Alternate, thank you, I couldn't quite get my tongue around that word. And I think at a select board meeting, we changed that for me to be the.
The primary.
The primary.
We offered you that, and you said, no, thank you.
I did?
Yeah, to be the permanent alternate.
Okay, well, it seems like I am the permanent.
Okay, well, I'd like to nominate you to be the full-time.
Okay.
What do you call it, the full representative?
Okay, and then.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright, I won't vote because, yeah, I'm involved. So. Skip Lindsey has been listed out as the alternate, I did contact Skip, and he's never really, he was kind of, I think, sort of surprised that he was the alternate, and he says that he has a conflict with the Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday of every month that they meet, so he, but.
I can't do it either.
Somebody from CV Fiber asked if Jane Noel Lorenau would be willing to serve as the alternate, and I asked Jane if she would be willing to do that, and she said yes, so I was hoping that the select board could appoint her as the alternate rep to CV Fiber.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jane is our alternate rep for CV Fiber.
Yeah, and she did attend the meeting last week too, just to kind of check it out, so.
I know they really wanted somebody who was going to be an active member, you know, and not
Right.
Zoom into the meetings, so.
Well, they do their meetings totally by Zoom, so.
Yeah, this is the CV RPC, all of our meetings are remote.
Same, same for me with them.
Do you still have a conflict with the meeting?
I do have a conflict, but I've been able to work it out where their meeting starts at six, so I usually stay on till about seven. They usually last about an hour, maybe a little bit longer, and then I've let the Regional Planning Commission know of the conflict, and usually, so I join that meeting as soon as I can. So for now, it's working out, if somebody else did want to be the full-time rep to CV Fiber or to the Central of Long Regional Planning Commission, I would happily let go of one of them, or at some point, maybe even both. But, I mean, to me, as a member of the Planning Commission, and just with what people, one of the main things that came up that people really wanted to see in town was access to high-speed internet.
That's why we don't have a bunch of money.
So this seems like a very important thing to be taking part in, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other updates, Michael?
No.
Alright, so, any other business from anyone?
What's this one about, what's one of your cemetery?
Well, I was just going to report that the Cemetery Commission asked that the well shield be put on, well, yeah, it's a well shield, I guess. There's a state law that says you can't bury bodies within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of a domestic water source, so.
Right, which is across the road and just right at the.
So that took out about half of the area that they had donated, but, and they also wanted all the lots in that section to be half-size. So the, the surveyor's working on that, I've talked with Chris Green, and he's going to be working on preparing the deed. And he's going to talk with the surveyor about, you know, there's no deed or any information on the old cemetery at all, who owns what. So Chris is going to try to find a way that he can do the whole thing in one deed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Probably was part of the same property at one time, but.
There is a plot plan.
Oh yeah, there's a little, yeah.
It's pretty lame.
Yeah. It shows who buried where, I guess, but that's about it.
That's about it, it doesn't give dimensions and doesn't give.
So anyways, that's, that's the, finally starting to happen on that. And then I think they're waiting to do the final, I don't know if they've done the final grading, but putting up the fence and things like that, they're probably not going to do that until after the deed is passed. The bear has picked out which lots he wants for his compensation, I think he asked for four lots, so. And Cranberry Meadow, we got the grant letter, and it came with all kinds of conditions, things that I was not prepared, you know, that I wished they had told me before, so I sent them a email, I said, what the heck? You know, you didn't tell me all this stuff, and they wrote back, and they said, oh, we'll help you, we'll do this and that and the other things. So anyways, that's going to be more.
More work.
More, yeah.
Lucky you.
Yeah, well, hopefully it won't all be for me. Yeah. Meanwhile, the owner is antsy to get it up, you know, get their money, but, oh well, what can we do?
Okay.
So the, I, I put here for the executive session, really just to talk about the status of the Daigle, and I think we've been there.
I feel like we've been there. For forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Or better, actually.
Yeah.
So I don't, I, I don't feel the need to go into executive session based on the other things that.
Is there anything else involved with that? The litigation that, that we need to know about in executive session, or is it pretty much?
I don't think so, you know, I was just, I've been keeping track of it because the town is paying for this enforcement action, and we have to do our part, so I've been trying to keep the lawyer involved, you know, notify that we don't want to pay him to come out here every month and see what the status is, so. I've been doing that for him, and I thought there was, it looked like something was finally happening, but then
Just another one month extension.
Yeah. So, I have no idea.
So at the hearing today, they got a month extension to?
Right.
Okay, so we'll see what's, what it looks like in a month.
It's going to be at a standstill fairly soon.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I would like to say one thing.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, Ms. Mary.
I would like to give Chuck a big thank you for the work he has done on the roads over the last few years. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, much appreciated, you know.
Thanks for all the work.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely, tremendous amount of work.
If you want to come back as the sub-road commissioner.
Yeah, maybe next summer.
Yeah. When do you leave?
You're here.
Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, it'll be so. If my dump truck went down them clouds, it would be tomorrow. I got to get that back.
You take it with you?
No. No, I got a broken spring that needs to be fixed. Bet they won't be paid for spring.
Yeah, I think you walked into kind of a.
Less than perfect environment.
Situation of sorts and I really do appreciate your being the, dealing with both the select board and the road crew and.
Couple of other people.
Yeah, a couple of other people that will remain unmentioned, but I mean, I was really grateful for, for what you did.
Well, it turned out pretty good.
Well, I certainly learned a lot from you, so I appreciate it.
Thanks.
I really did. Learned a ton.
Yeah, we'll miss your input on it.
We'll miss you, but you're welcome anytime. Yes, we do.
Thank you for getting it, yeah.
Yes, we do, yeah.
You should get a bowl.
I'm paying for spring. Okay, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-four.
Motion to adjourn.
Woodbury Select Board meeting. Okay, we are adjourned.